Good evening. Thank you all for joining us. My name is Bunny Ward and I am one of the representatives of SIC, the School Improvement Council. And I'm going to introduce our moderator for the evening, Brian McConkey. Brian is on the 10:00 PM news anchor and managing editor at Watch Fox. He is a native of North Attleboro, Massachusetts and a graduate of the College of Holy Cross. A lot of y'all know Brian and he has been a fixture in Columbia for more than a decade covering both news and sports across the Midlands area. During that time, he has been honored with multiple awards, including two Edward R. Moro Awards and multiple Associated Press Awards for his work in both news and sports reporting. Before arriving in Columbia in 2001, Brian worked as a news reporter in southwest Georgia. Brian's last assignment at his station there turned into one of the most exciting months of his career when he covered the 2000 presidential recount in Tallahassee, Florida. When he's not chasing down the latest news story, Brian is also very active in the community, volunteering his time throughout the year to Columbia's Ronald McDonald House, the Alzheimer's Association and other Midlands organizations. So, thank you for joining us and on behalf of the SICs and the teacher forum, we look forward to a lively and spirited debate. Here we go.
Thank you very much. I certainly didn't deserve that introduction, but I appreciate it. And she did mention that I do work with the Alzheimer's Association, so a quick reminder, their Walk to End Alzheimer's is Saturday at Firefly Stadium, so, there you go. You may have noticed that we're in election season. That's all I really need to say, but it's such an important thing, the power of the vote. And I have heard people tell me throughout my life that the most important level of government is the local level. It's certainly the presidential elections that drive people to the ballot box, but it's the folks that are running for office that are sitting here in front of you that really make a difference in your children's lives and your family's lives. So, of course, we want to give them the most appropriate forum to tell you what they're all about so you can make an informed decision. I want to introduce you to our candidates quickly and then run over our rules for the evening. We have Michael Kates, Robert Gant, Beth Hutchinson and Dr. Barb Waldman. And they will have a moment to introduce themselves here coming up. I want to give you an idea of how this is going to work this evening. Every candidate is going to be given two minutes for an opening remark here at the moment. We're going to do 10 to 12 rounds. Each candidate will get a chance to answer questions that are submitted by the public. They've been screened. We have them down here in this basket. They'll be chosen from there and then I will ask the candidates. They'll be drawn at random, so I have no idea what's coming up here. I haven't seen them. The candidates will have one minute to answer each of those questions and there will be timers up here, of course, holding them to those times. Now, there will be, I want to make sure we're clear on this part, there will be no questions directly taken from the audience. However, many of you may have noticed that you did have the opportunity to submit a written question that could potentially be asked tonight, has to be screened and of course, make sure that we can get it in the possible pool for questions tonight. Now, after those 10 to 12 rounds of the general questions, we're going to have, I guess, a lightning round. We call it the silent speed round. It will be one question or five questions for each candidate and they have one-word answers, yes or no. They have a plaque that they will hold up and that is the simple silent round. And finally, we will wrap up with two minutes for closing remarks. So, I'd now like to offer the candidates a chance to open the proceedings for themselves. Mr. Michael Kates, you were drawn at random to open the opening remarks section.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here, even though I feel like I'm sitting at the kids' table. I think I need to stand. But I'm a parent, student here in District 5. I'm a 10th grader, Austin graduated last year from Springville High School, is attending Anderson University. My wife is a graduate of Irma High School. We live in the home she grew up in, the Colquhoun neighborhood, so this is home for us. I'm a licensed broker and realtor with Keller Williams and a certified real estate educator. I spend the majority of my time in the classroom, teaching adults and coaching and training real estate agents and other professionals related to the industry. I'm also the minister of music at North Turnham Baptist Church and so I have a strong connection to the arts. It's been a love and passion of mine for a number of years. But we are privileged to make this our home. My wife's a pharmacist, grew up in the pharmacy, a father in Hawthorne Pharmacy, and she's still a pharmacist in the communities, so that's where our roots are. We're just delighted to be here. I want to thank you to the SIC, PTOs and our teacher forum for hosting tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kates. Mr. Robert Gant, you have second.
Thank you very much, Mr. McConkey. And I want to thank all of you for being here. I want to invite you up on the stage. I think we could have a very intimate, close town hall, literary meeting tonight. I often say at these forums, I wish that we had a stadium and it was packed and we had people standing outside scalping tickets, but unfortunately, that's not the case. We're glad, I'm glad you're here, took your time tonight to come out. I will tell you that I've lived in the Irma area since 1972. Irma was the growth area. We didn't have children, but we, the reputation of these schools was out here and we moved to Irma. It was a growth area. We lived in the town area of Irma until 1988. Our first child, we had three children, and our first child started at Irma Elementary in about 1983. But my three children were all educated in Lexington, Richland and five schools. And I'm going to back up a little bit. My wife is not here tonight, but I will tell you, my wife Laura and I have been married for over seven years. And we moved out here a couple of years into our marriage and it's a wonderful community. But my three children, I'll tell you, two of my children are teachers. So, you can bet if there's a teacher issue, I hear about it and I know about it and I get plenty of extra lobbying. So, I want to invite you all to do extra, go through to them, but they do tell me what they think about. I see one of my former neighbors here running a gig line. We moved to Irma about the same time when things were really changing in Irma area. My third daughter's a physician in the Greenville area, but what I'll tell you about it is that all three of my children receiving quality education in Lexington, five. The schools have always had a great reputation, they still have a great reputation, and my goal is to continue that in the future and make it even better. I want to thank you all for being here. According to the background, I didn't tell you about work career, but I'm basically retired right now, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gant. Dr. Barb Waldman, we drew you next.
I'm a resident of Lexington County. I've been living in District 5 for over 24 years now, and I originally moved to the home that I'm in now because of the district's reputation, and I've been very pleased with what the district has had to offer. My daughter attended kindergarten through 12th grade in District 5 schools. She started off in Harpside West, went through Crossroads, Irma Middle and Irma High School. She's now in college in her third year already. In terms of myself, I received my Bachelor of Science and my PhD in biochemistry at Virginia Tech and then at Johns Hopkins, and I'm currently a member of faculty in the Department of Biological Sciences at University of South Carolina. So, I'm very familiar with what colleges are looking for in their incoming undergraduate and even graduate students. And I've had a lot of experience teaching and working one-on-one with students at the college level. I would like to see District 5 continue to grow the opportunities for all the students to achieve to their greatest potential while making prudent use of the funds that we do have available. In these times, it's difficult to deal with funding restrictions, but we need to continue to challenge all of our students to achieve to their best. Pursuing excellence for tomorrow's challenges is the district motto and doing so is an ever-evolving task, so we always need to be looking forward, trying to figure out what it is that we need to prepare our students for to be successful in life in the future. I'm very attentive. I listen to what's going on and I'll pay attention, evaluate the issue at hand before making a decision or acting on it. But I encourage teachers and all the stakeholders in District 5 to let me know what they're thinking. I have been attending school board meetings for the last, I can't even remember how many years. I began probably in 2004 when I was part of a committee that made a report and ever since then I've been attending on a regular basis and I'll stop there.
All right, right on cue. Very good. Well, that brings, and now that you've gotten to know a little bit more about our candidates, we do want to start our round of questions here. Oh, well, that's right. I wasn't on cue. Beth Hutchinson, you are last but not least.
Thank you very much. I certainly have a lot to say and would hate to be missed. Thank you, though. Once again, I have to repeat what other people have said is that I do value the fact that all of you are here and taking time from your personal time at home to come learn about the issues facing our school districts and what the school board candidates think. And I also want to say that I think it's so important that the teachers, the teachers' forum is very involved. This is a very involved group and it can be a very powerful group when it comes to supporting issues that are near and dear to your heart. And certainly the SICs with the community and the strong parental support that we have in this district, I think it's great to have their involvement in this election because they do know what's happening in our schools year in and year out and they can make a difference as well as the school board. So, let me tell you a little bit about myself. I've served on the school board for 14 years. It was not continuous. I first got on the school board in 1996 and served out an unexpired term, so I served two terms for a total of six years. And then in 2008, I decided to run again. There were some challenges facing our school district and if you've been in the school district for a while, you realize that we had gone through a couple of superintendents and we also were facing a great need to pass a bond referendum. So, I felt like it was really a great opportunity for me to get involved. During those 14 years, what I have learned is that I continually learn all the time and what I hope to offer for the next four years, if I'm so lucky to be elected, is to use my knowledge and my experience to continue making our schools and our students the best educated that they can be. Thanks.
All right, now that Ms. Hutchinson has guided us back on track, we can get to the questions now that I'm paying attention again. The order of questions, again, was chosen at random and so there will be a different order of answering. We have the first question now, and this first question will be for Dr. Waldman. The question is, please describe what you have done the last years as a volunteer in Lexington, Richland and District 5. Have you served on a PTA or School Improvement Council, volunteered to serve as a mentor for a student, volunteered to read to a class, or worked as a volunteer in the classroom? And again, you have one minute to answer questions.
In the last year, I've been a member, a community member of the Irma High School SIC as well as a member of their Positive Promotions Committee. And I've also served as the president of Page Five, the Parent Advocates for Gifted Education in District 5. And so, in both of these roles, I've had a lot of involvement with other parents, community members, and the goal is to just get more involvement with parents and in terms of advocating for student achievement, student opportunities for gifted students in our district.
Thank you very much. Next question. The second question is for Mr. Gant. Question is, will you support Dr. Hefner's 2020 plan?
Great question, and yes, I will, just a simple answer, but as you all know, Dr. Hefner presented a plan to the board, the 2015 plan. We're ending the build-out of that plan right now, but his 2020 plan addresses the needs of this district up through 2020. One of the first things he's identified is the need for a wing at Chaykin Elementary, Chaykin Middle School. It's a brand-new school, which we built at the time we built the school, but we were being very conservative to make sure we had enough money to cover the needs that we had. Dr. Hefner, as most of you know, is a very thoughtful person, puts a lot of thought in plans, but our district is growing. We're growing about 300 students a year from 10-day count last year to 10-day count this year. Some future growth is going to demand future building and I would quite frankly support that plan to the fullest. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The third question is for Mr. Kates, and it is, do you agree with the recently passed Read to Succeed Act? Please explain your position.
Read to Succeed is, whether we agree with it or not, it is here, and so we'll have to figure out how to best implement it. My concerns with Read to Succeed, one is we have done such a great job in our district with literacy and with intervention. I have a child that benefited from reading recovery and it was because of what we were doing as a district. So, one of my concerns with Read to Succeed is it might be seen as a step back for our district. The other concern is the issue of retention in the third grade. There's very little literature to support any positive outcomes from retraining a student. And then finally, the last concern I have with the Read to Succeed is the cost that it could impose on our teachers and educators to become certified in the necessary classes for Read to Succeed.
Thank you very much. And the final question of our first round of questions goes to Beth Hutchinson, and the question is, what are you hoping to accomplish if we're elected at school board?
Thank you. One thing we've got before us and we've had this past several years, especially since the Great Recession, is limited dollars. And probably you're tired of hearing this, but it's a reality. The school board members have three main responsibilities, one of which is setting the budget. And the budget, of course, leads everything else. It involves how many teachers we hire, keeping the teacher-student ratio low, the programs that we can put forth, and every other aspect of the school district. So, that really is a big concern of the school board each year and we need to continue working with our legislators, making sure they understand the impact their decisions make on our school district. Each district needs to be handled differently. Thank you.
Thank you. That is our first round of questioning. We'll now continue the second. And the first question of the second round of questions is again, a lengthy one for Dr. Waldman. The Center for Advanced Technical Studies and the magnet programs in our district have put us on a trajectory that is the envy of many school district stations alike. What do you see as the next steps to enhance the initiatives as we continue to improve the educational opportunities offered to all students?
It's a good question. The Center for Advanced Technical Studies offers some amazing classes at the center. One of my concerns is that all of our students have access to those classes. Because of the way those classes are set up, they require a major time commitment during the day, and so what I would like to see us do is to find ways to allow all of our students, regardless of what high school they attend as their home high school, to be able to take advantage of the courses at the Center for Technical Studies. And the magnet programs, I think we have great magnet programs and we should be looking at the possibilities of enhancing contributions to magnet programs.
Thank you very much. Maybe next time we'll get you a short question. Mr. Gant, this question is for you. What is your view on using student tests to evaluate teachers?
Well, I can tell you that I don't know of a model that's been shown to be successful using the test as a criteria for evaluation. And I think the best model is in our schools with our principals, our principals for instruction, to go into the classroom and to work with the teachers. I think in Washington DC, they tried testing as a criteria for evaluation and raises. They had massive revolt from that, they had massive lawsuits and it didn't work. So, I don't think that's the proper way to go. I think the system that we have in place, our teachers have a seat at the table and we have a wonderful superintendent of education that's listening. She is a former teacher, she taught at School District 5 at one point in her career. So, I think we will be a part of that process as it evolves even more. So, absolutely, don't see that as the one criteria to have in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kates, this question is for you. Tell us about the last time you visited a District 5 school and what were the positive aspects of the learning environment you witnessed and what are some areas for improvement?
Well, I'm fortunate to be in schools quite often as a volunteer for PTO, SIC, Yellow Jacky Club, other activities. And I'm always amazed at the fact that we've gotten them out of neat little robes and the way they're engaged in their learning and their learning is becoming more active. See them integrating their devices. I have a student that's in a Spanish class, they're Skyping with Spanish-speaking peers across the country and we really have gone, we talk about one-to-one technology, but really, we have gone from one to world, and that is just a neat thing to watch. And I do think our technology integration could be improved, the way we use it in instruction in our classroom.
Thank you. Beth Hutchinson, this question is for you. It is, what specifically would you do to ensure funds are spent wisely and to keep the public informed?
One of the things that we do when setting the budget is to have an open forum for the whole community to come here, an overview by our chief financial officer, and then for the public to have a chance to talk to the school board, to express their concerns, questions, and it's really, it's a valuable forum. Sometimes we have great attendance and other times we don't, but I think that that's very helpful for us as a board because then we get a sense of what the community is thinking, but we also have great input from our district administrators. We do have to continue working with our legislators, as I mentioned before, because they're the ones that release the state funding. So, I would say that's important and also seeking some funding, some new businesses, economic development, which I've done in special communities in the past, and I'd like to continue doing that.
Thank you. And thank you to all of our candidates for staying in the time limits. We don't always see that at candidate forums, so through two rounds, we're doing pretty well on that. So, again, we will get into our third round now and we will be starting with Dr. Waldman. Hey, I can't believe I promised. It's a short question. What do you feel is the most fair and effective method in measuring teacher performance?
I think that the mosaic model that is used with the administration can observe these teachers in their classroom is a reasonable way, and I don't like the term evaluation. I'd rather that it be an assessment, something that can help teachers to find out what their strengths and weaknesses are and then allow them to improve upon their craft.
Mr. Gant, this question is for you. Specifically, what will you do as a board member to help teachers teach and help students learn?
Well, one of the first things would be to, as Hutchinson mentioned, our budget. We have to pass a good budget every year that allows for proper operation of our schools. One of the criteria, one of the real pluses I think we have in the school district are class size policies. And one of the quickest ways in a budget crisis to solve the dollars is to increase class size. So, one of the things that I hold very special is our class size policy. I will do everything in my power as a board member, and I have, I'm serving on a board now that feels the same way, I don't think the D. problem, to ensure that our teachers have the time and the tools and the resources to teach and reach our students, and that's happening every day in School District 5, and I will protect that as long as I can.
Michael Kates, this question is for you. What will you do to continue to improve our school facilities and what will you specifically do differently from other board members?
Well, I think we have to look continually at our facilities. Are we maximizing those facilities? New facilities are great. I have students in my household that have taken advantage of those beautiful facility we're in right now, but as we look to build new facilities, let's make sure we're not forgetting about those, I guess we maybe call legacy facilities and make sure that they are receiving the same attention. It's hard to say exactly what I would do differently. Some of the, not being privileged, is some of the conversation that goes on about that, but I would, before we build anything new, I'd like to see something concrete, so this is how we're best using the facilities we have.
Ms. Hutchinson, the question is, would you support raising taxes in small businesses again in such a large amount of 16.7 mills as last time?
When we had the last millage increase, it was the first millage increase in a number of years, and I think that it's very important for all of us to realize that the strength of our community and the strength of these businesses is key, really involved with the success of our schools. And if we can't produce great schools, then we're not going to attract new families. As you heard earlier, we are increasing our numbers, nor can our businesses succeed. So, I think it's really important for us to do, take a balanced look at all of this. We certainly don't want to overtax our small businesses, but we also want to make sure we have proper teacher pay, able to keep our class sizes, able to have the special programs to help all students. And so, it's a fine balancing act and the school board members every year really deliberate for a long time to make sure they make a good decision.
Thank you, and thank you for staying in time again. Another round, everyone, with their times. We are now starting our fourth round of questions. Dr. Waldman, we'll begin with you again. Have you served on any school organization or committee in District 5 in the last four years in a volunteer role? Please tell us about that service.
Well, again, I've served on the SIC at Irma High School for the last five years, I think it is, serving as SIC chair part of that time, serving as the secretary part of that time, and now currently serving as community member and again, as a member of the Positive Promotions Committee within the Irma High School SIC. And I've also served as the Irma High School volleyball team mom during that time. I've been the Irma High School PTSO Vice President and fundraising chair, and I've served on Page Five, the Parent Advocates for Gifted Education in District 5 for a number of years and have been the Page Five president as well.
Thank you. Mr. Gant, how can using student tests for teacher evaluation be equitable across the board? For example, how can you fairly assess PE, art and music teachers in the same way as in math, ELA, SS or science?
Well, I think I had part of that question a minute ago, but honestly, I don't think you can make those comparisons. It's a very hard, extremely hard to do to cross those different boundaries of PE and art and then the classroom teacher. But the classroom teacher at School District 5 and most teachers that teach in public education, public education, don't mind and would love to be evaluated, they just want to be a fair process. And evaluation on the basis of a test, when you work with a student, your principal knows how much you've worked with that student one-on-one and you have students at all different levels, I mean, this district, we have schools that have just different needs throughout. We have Title I schools, we have non-Title I schools. So, my thought is that we don't use the test as a criteria to evaluate, that we continue to have the principal, the vice principal for instruction or the assistant principal for instruction, working with that teacher, and who knows best the teacher than those principals and the teacher knows their students. So, to me, that test score is not an indication of how well things are going in that classroom and growth.
Thank you very much. Michael Kates, this question is for you. What is your opinion on the standardization of instruction in the classroom and do you think instruction should be standardized in the classroom?
Well, I think the underlying question is being asked as well as can we have standardization and differentiation? And having served on the standards committee at the state level, one of the concerns I have that we are, we're putting a lot of emphasis in tests that change way too often. It's a moving target. Two, our standards are very wide and not deep enough. So, I would, my vision of the ideal situation is where standard is So I would, my, my vision of the ideal situation is where standardization, those tests and standards tell us what we would teach, but differentiation allows that professional educator the room to do what's best for those particular students in the classroom. So I don't see those as much made choices.
Thank you very much, sir. Beth Hutchinson, the question is, do you agree with the magnet concept for Spring Hill High and other schools in the district, and please explain your position on that?
I certainly do, and, and I say that because I've seen the great results that we have had in each of our schools. I was just at Seven Oaks Elementary School the other week, where they were celebrating their 50th year of being in operation. And there, we had the students performing, we were able to check out the broadcasting booth, and all these different initiatives that students in the past didn't really have an opportunity to take advantage of. Certainly, this auditorium and the fine arts focus here at Irma High School is very important. And I think that what we've done is created great opportunities for students who can now choose, they have a great ability to make a choice on what school suits them the best. And I think that's what parents really want, they want to have choice, and they want to make sure that each of their children are able to meet the needs and succeed the best that they can.
Thank you. We now get to our fifth round of questions here, and we will start with Dr. Waldman again. The question is, do you value the district having national board teachers, and do you feel national board certification deserves the current state of Lexington-Richland Five students?
Yes, and yes. I think, I think that national board certification is a great motivator for our teachers, it's, I know it's a lot of work to get national board certification, and I think they, they deserve the compensation that they get from the statement from Lexington-Richland Five in terms of scholarships.
Thank you. Mr. Gant, do you support district-issued technology devices, or would you rather have a bring-your-own-device initiative?
Well, I certainly do support the district's initiative, and it's, it's working quite well. The, at some point, and I'm sure that's the case now, all students don't have to accept the devices and might bring their own device, but it's a great initiative, we're using Chromebooks, I believe, in the middle schools, we have a different device in the high schools, and that's the world that our students live in. My, my bigger concern would be for students that we have in our district that probably don't have their own device and couldn't, couldn't have an alternative to that, but we're providing that, I certainly support that, and I hope someday we'll set that right down into elementary school. We have plenty of technology in all of our schools, including in elementary, but it's a great program, and it's working very well.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kates, I'm going to read the question, you may have already answered this though in several different other questions, I'm going to read it to you, you can do what you will with it, and maybe we can go back to the well. How do you think teachers should be evaluated?
That's not a hot topic. Look, it's, I've never met an educator that was against being evaluated. It goes back to what's been said, I think we, there's some value in looking at the test data, but to improve instruction, not as a punitive measure. How do you know what progress is being made? But again, to have a system that, you don't, you don't get all students equal, they come to you from different places, there are different things going on in their homes, and that's not accounted for when you just look at test data and you look at even growth of that student. So, I'm, I'm more inclined to look at things like, how are they engaging the students? How are they communicating with their families? How are they taking those students, even in incremental steps? And again, test data may be valuable to, to improve instruction, but not in a punitive way.
All right, so the question still has more legs. If we get another one, we'll probably have to move on to a different one. Ms. Hutchinson, the last time you talked to teachers about school issues and opportunities, what made the biggest impression on you, and what do you plan to do with that information?
I think one of the things that has made a big impression on me is, once again, I'll go back to Seven Oaks Elementary School because I was just there, I think, two or three weeks ago, is the fact that the, the teachers have really empowered the students. And afterwards, I had a chance to talk to several teachers, teachers who had been there years before, and then current teachers, and what they were talking about was far different than the type of school that I had when I was coming along, where you were just lectured. But these are, these teachers are really making sure that our students are empowered, they're, they're creative thinking, they're able to process, and they're able to come up with great ideas on their own. So, I really liked hearing that, and I think that that's probably going on all across our district and all of our schools.
Thank you very much. So that brings us to about our halfway point, we've been through five rounds of questions, we're hoping to get through 10 to 12 rounds. So we'll get now into the sixth round, with the first question of that going to Dr. Waldman. We've had a lot of longer questions for you, this one is straight to the point. How will you make a difference in this school district?
Well, I will bring a new, a different perspective to the school board, and I'll be listening to what all the stakeholders have to say. How do I leverage my expertise? As, as a professional educator at the collegiate level, I can, I can bring that perspective to the district, I can, well, I'll live with that.
Mr. Gant, the school district represents a very diverse community, what experience can you bring to the district to promote cohesiveness in the schools as well as in the community?
Well, we do have a very diverse community, and I think that's one of the absolute pluses of School District Five. And I think everybody brings something to the table, but I would say encourage that diversity, encourage people to intermingle and share, share with each other. It's a good thing, I know that Ms. Hutchinson's brought up Seven Oaks Elementary, Seven Oaks Elementary is one of the schools that used to, we used to think was going to be losing student population, they did for a while, but it is one of the fastest growing and the fullest schools right now, we don't know what we're going to use for classrooms. But one of the many pluses in that school today is a very diverse population, they have an influence from the university, they have an influence just from what America looks like, and I think that's a wonderful thing. So I think we need to embrace it, we need to encourage it, and celebrate each other's diversity.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Kates, how should the district deal with the growing number of students at Lake Murray Elementary School?
Well, Dr. Hepburn, part of his 2020 vision addresses some of that. We obviously have population shifting in our district, and we're going to have to look at how we best serve those areas as we begin to extend the district into that part of the county. Unfortunately, there is no quick, easy answer. I do think we have to look at, are, do we have facilities where we can add classrooms, which is quicker than building new facilities. And I'm not talking about portals, I'm talking about expanding those existing facilities. I hope we put the portable business out of this. But can we expand and add classrooms in some of these facilities as, as a quicker measure to reduce the overcrowding?
Thank you. Ms. Hutchinson, we continue with another question related to the growing population within the district. This one is more specific to another area. How should the district address the growing enrollment in the Chappan Cluster?
Well, the Chappan Cluster, because it has so much land, there's a lot of growth, we see a lot of developments going on, they've been up in Chappan recently, they have the new Publix going up, and several new businesses, so growth is going out there. So, certainly, as, as Mr. Kates mentioned, the superintendent's 2020 vision does have a plan to add on to Chappan Middle School, which I support 100%, and also to add an elementary school in the Chappan area. I think the thing that we have to remember is that it's not just growth in Chappan, but we're also seeing some of the older neighborhoods in the Irma area, in the Dutch Fork area. Those neighborhoods are changing slightly as maybe the older people without children are moving to smaller homes and where new families are moving in. So, it's, I believe in the superintendent's 2020 vision, he taught me about the ever-changing school district.
Thank you very much. Again, thank you everyone for staying within the time limits, you're all doing an excellent job. I know it's not easy to fit it all into a minute, but you're doing a great job with that. We'll get into our seventh question now for the candidates, Dr. Waldman, we'll begin with you again. Tell us about your experience supporting and advocating for teachers, and what are some ways that you plan to be responsive to feedback from teachers?
Well, I've had experience advocating for teachers in the last several years, I mean, there have been times when teachers have brought some issues to me, and I've looked at those issues and then taken them to the appropriate level of the administration to see what, what could be done to, to remedy the situation. And in the future, again, I, I encourage teachers to contact me through my email address, partwaldman816@gmail.com, and I will be happy to follow up on any information that you want to share with me and to do whatever I can to accommodate.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gant, what areas of expertise do you bring to the District Five Board, and how would you leverage that expertise to make the district better?
Well, the past, for the past 16 years, I've served as a board member of the District Five Board, and I think it's been a learning experience, we talk about lifelong learners, it's been a great learning experience for me, but I bring, I do bring that experience, and those things that we've experienced over 16 years, there's been a lot of that. The leverage for that is, is to try to understand the many issues before the district, try to talk to my fellow board members and convince them, or educate them where it's needed to certain issues, or that they may educate me. I have an open ear to any issue, any thing that's out there that's for the good of students. So, I would hope for those 16 years, my background was that I retired in the Department of Revenue or worked in an area where I dealt with business people, I dealt with owners of manufacturing companies and accountants, those type of things. So I had, over the years, I've had a lot of experience dealing with people about issues and businesses, but just people issues are the main things we do. So, I hope to bring all that to the table, and again, for another four years. Thank you.
Right on the button. Next question for Mr. Kates. Are you in favor of vouchers for private schools or tax credits for sending children to private schools?
No, I'm not in favor of vouchers. I know my, I have family that, that would benefit, and my, my sister, who's, we often talk about that, and the, the argument is, well, they don't participate, they don't, why are they paying, they're not using the resources. But we all use resources, or all pay for resources in our taxation that we don't necessarily take direct benefit of. I, I think vouchers would further erode the funding for public education, and it's already a complex formula on how we receive that funding, and it would make it even more unpredictable than it is today. So no, I would not be in favor of that.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Hutchinson, so it's just a one-part question, but it is lengthy, so bear with me. Lexington-Richland School District Five continues to grow and expand deeper into Richland County, in particular, expanding north up the Broad River area east of I-26. If elected, what would you do to help better serve the residents of Richland County who have to bus our children into Irma and Lexington County?
Well, of course, I think most of us, most of you know that we have recently built the Center for Technology over in Richland County, and this is to the right side of I-26, but we've also added the Chappan Middle School. And that, so those are great additions to that area. The philosophy for our school district is to have neighborhood schools, so whenever it's possible, we want to make sure that we build schools where the population is. And as I mentioned earlier, it's, it seems to be Chappan, and so that's where we're putting schools. Certainly, it's not our intention ever to keep children on school bus for a long period of time, but we do have to be prudent in the way we spend our tax money to make sure that we are putting schools where they need to be, and keeping the whole concept of neighborhood schools for those who want them, and the magnet programs for other families.
Thank you very much. Right on time again. We go around the loop again to Dr. Waldman. Question, another short one. What qualifies you to be a member of the school board?
I've been a very dedicated member of this community for quite a few years now, basically since 2001 when my daughter started school. And since that time, I've been a member, I've been a member of SICs through all those schools, and PTOs, and, and the Page Five group, and I've also been attending school board meetings for probably the last six or seven years. And so I'm, I'm really aware of what the school board is facing in terms of issues and decisions they need to make, and I'm, I'm ready to hit the ground running should I be elected.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gant, technology, a hot topic, of course, at all levels of education, what are your ideas on the technology budget and the use of technology in classrooms?
I had a sort of similar question with Waldman.
You did?
I'm very supportive of our, of our technology effort, and I will tell you that I think at one point we got behind the curve, but we're not there anymore. I think the use of technology in our schools and our classrooms is part of the world that we live in, but most importantly, it's the real world that our children, and our grandchildren, and our students live in. And most of, most of all that technology can be done on the phone today or some other device, so it's, it's a part of their education. When we go in our media centers today, we don't see encyclopedias stacked on the wall, we see resource centers where the students can Google all that information because it changes rapidly. I bet anybody in this room at one time, other than these young students, had a set of encyclopedias that was just great, and I still love mine today, but it's about 20 years outdated. But that technology allows them to stay in real time, it's the world that we live in, it's the world that they live in, and the technology budget and the process in School District Five, I think it's right on track, and we're constantly trying to make strides with that.
The old encyclopedia says, I still got that in my front size. Next question for Mr. Kates. What experience can you offer to the business end, such as procurement and building projects, in order to be a good steward of resources?
Well, it's one area where I, I do have a strong background. I was fortunate for a number of years to work as a project manager designing and managing very complex dental and medical offices and facilities. So I understand that level of construction and the procurement process. In the military, I worked with both appropriated and non-appropriated funds, so I understand the complexity that comes when you're dealing with state and federal dollars, and as a small business person, I understand that you cannot balance everything on the, the back of the small business, and we have to look at that model.
Thank you very much. Next question is for Ms. Hutchinson. How do you keep in touch with what is going on in the schools within the district, and how will you stay in contact with the needs of students and the concerns of teachers, administrators, and parents?
Well, since I am a current school board member, I do have the advantage of getting regular reports at every school board meeting. And I think that one of the, the best aspects of our school board meetings are the superintendent's report, and that's when different administrators within the district are able to give school board members updates, whether it's finances, whether it's teacher evaluation, whether it's new programming to support students. And so that really does help us keep involved. Certainly, the school board members have the opportunity to ask for information, and, and I think we all do, and so we'll ask for reports, and so sometimes you might see a report, and where did that come from? But a particular school board member might have had a question from a teacher or a parent, and they want to find out a little bit more, and it's important for us to have these conversations and this information out in public for our school board members and for the whole public to hear.
Thank you very much. We begin the next round of questioning with Ms. Waldman. Thank you very much. We begin the next round of questioning with Ms. Walden. Why are you interested in running for the school board at this particular time?
As I mentioned before, my daughter graduated from high school a couple of years ago. I have, I'm an empty nester, so to speak, so I have time to be able to devote to the school district as a school board member. And again, I've been attending school board meetings, but I know there's a lot more to being a school board member than just attending a meeting twice a month. And so now I feel like I can dedicate the time that's necessary to lobby for the school board, to, you know, do what is best for our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gans. Likely question here. District Five is providing many excellent programs for students at all levels and receiving top scores in every arena, and it continues to be one of the best in the state and receives national recognitions as well. How will you gain the support of those in the community who are opposed to necessary taxes and bond money that will allow us to continue the tradition of educational excellence?
That's a great question, and it tops some of the great things that happen in this district. And we are a top school district. We have students that perform extremely well. And I would say to you that we always should put the information out. We're not always going to have a hundred percent support. We didn't have a hundred percent support in our last bond referendum, but we had about fifty-six percent. And in this day and time, that's considered pretty much a mandate. But I would say we put the information out, we try to convince those people to come along and see the benefit of it. I personally see good schools, good programs, class size, all that as a package that helps me as a property owner. Someday if I retire and sell my home and move somewhere else, it has more value because people want to live here. But I'd say we don't let the naysayers control the destiny of this school district, and we haven't. It didn't happen when I moved here in 1972. It hadn't happened recently. We've always had a few people on the outskirts that don't like what goes on. But quite honestly, we need to, we need to do what's right for students, and the majority has always been behind us. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kates. What would you do to ensure that the school board works together for the good of teachers and students despite having different opinions and priorities?
Well, I think the value of having, one, new school board members, but to have the multiple members is that you do get to hear a variety of opinions. You want every voice to be heard. And I think many people in this room that have worked with me in committees in the past, I've always worked, one, to hear the voices at the table, two, to be heard, and then three, at the end of the day, to fully support what we decided to do as a committee. So I think it's a challenge for the boards, and I commend the board for the way they have approached business over the past few years with some difficult issues. But I do think we have to make sure every voice is being heard and that no voice is being grounded out.
Thank you very much. Beth Hutchinson. Question is, describe how you are currently personally involved in supporting the schools in Lexington-Richland Five, and how does this positively influence your potential role as board member?
Certainly as a board member, I do have an impact, I believe. One of seven board members have an impact on what happens in our schools and the outcomes. I know that I advocate for several things. One is early childhood education. I advocate for a lot of things, but that's something that is very near and dear to my heart. I understand and know from research that the dollars that we put into early childhood education pay off great dividends. Several years ago, I asked for us to increase the number of 4K kindergarten. We've been able to add two new classes, and this is for the community. They come in, they pay their way. I'd like to see more opportunities for families who may not have the resources to put their children in quality facilities. I think it's important. I would love to see 4K across the school district.
Thank you very much. We're coming up on the tenth and final round of questioning here, and we'll begin with Dr. Walden again for this final round of the extended questions. Here's the question. Students in middle and high schools are being provided with Chromebooks or iPads. Do you support the initiative, and how do you think this benefits our students and education?
Oh, I definitely support the initiative that has provided the Chromebooks for our middle schoolers and the iPads for our high school students. It's amazing how much technology students are able to use. I'm way behind the curve when it comes to technology, but in today's world, students need to be able to deal with any type of technology. And so the fact that we're actually using different types of, different physical pieces of technology, I think is to their benefit. And I think it's a good initiative, and we need to continue.
Thank you very much. Robert Gans. Final question for you in this round. What do you think of the district's technology initiative, and how do you think it can be improved?
Could you repeat that?
I sure can. What do you think of the district's technology initiative, and how do you think it can be improved?
You know, I think a lot of, I think it's the second time I've had that question too. The initiative is great. The improvement would be to make sure that, and I expressed this the first time I had a little piece of that question, but my concern of the students that don't have the technology piece at home, making sure they have the time and the resource to have that elementary, middle, and high school. So the initiative, I think is great. The concern is that we improve that to make sure we cover those students that don't have all the resources. We're a district, we talk about diversity, we're a district of folks that have a lot, and we're a district that we send backpacks home with kids on the weekend. So we have to be very cognizant of the fact we're not all in the same boat, and we're all, it's not all happening the same way at home. And I think it all goes together, but the initiative itself and expanding that, we have the applause. Thank you.
All right. This next question for Mr. Kates. It is about technology, but it's a little more specific, drills a little more down into the issue. So here it is. It's our understanding the district developed an elementary technology plan that would phase in one-to-one computing for all students. As a board member, how would you ensure that plan is fully implemented? It seems to be very important. So our children are developing additional skills for success in school and life, so they are college and career-ready. Would also assist students who do not have technology resources at their homes?
One-to-one, what I referred to earlier, is one-to-world, has worked well in our middle school and high school. As a parent, I'm a little more skeptical of that same approach in the elementary school. It may be that classroom resources, where we have a set of devices for each class, and the younger elementary grades may better suit those students. So I would want to look at that a little more and see if the same exact model that we're using in middle school and high school, I'm not sure you could just overlay that model on the elementary level. I do think increasing the access to the devices and using those devices to improve instruction is important at every level.
Thank you very much. Final question has nothing to do with technology.
When I thought of me, because you said psychology.
We didn't get a psychology. It might be in the hopper there, but we didn't get it. Ms. Hutchinson, this last one is for you. Do you support annual cost of living increases for district employees? Why or why not?
I think that is ideal, and I know the board each year looks at that issue and asks, can we do this? And we talk to the superintendent, we talk to our CFO. Of course, with the Great Recession in 2008, 2009, and then going forward, we really suffered a big hit because the General Assembly cut school, public school funding back to the 1990s levels, and it really has not caught up. So we, we have to make some tough decisions. We do want to maintain that we have low student-teacher classrooms. I know that is a big plus. Big is very important. It helps teachers do their job, helps students learn. If we can afford to give cost of living raises to all of our teachers and our staff, it's very important to include them, then certainly I would support it. I think the board has some tough decisions, and we have to weigh all of those. I would support it if we could afford it.
Thank you very much. That is the completion of the ten rounds of the extended questions. Now, we did say there would be a silent speed round. So these are very simple. There'll be five questions here. We'll only do them one at a time. And you have the placards in front of you, green for yes and red for no on these. So we'll ask our questions and then give you adequate time to get that plaque in the air before we move on. The first question of the silent speed round, this is for everyone. Do you support the National Board stipend at its current rate? All right. Good answer. That's why it's a speed round. Second question, again, all of these for everybody. Do you believe student test scores should be used to evaluate teachers? Everyone in agreement on that one as well. The third question, do you support school vouchers or tax credits? And again, those across the board. Fourth question, do you support building a new elementary school in the Chapin Cluster? Everyone's on the same page with their question. And the fifth and final question of our silent speed round is, would you support a millage increase for the purpose of increasing teacher salaries? Thank you very much. That concludes the speed round. Now, we're all going to, we're going to allow all of our candidates now, two minutes apiece for closing remarks. Again, the order here for these remarks was drawn at random again. We will have a different order for this. Leading us off in our concluding remarks will be Mr. Gans. Mr. Gans, yes.
Sorry, I thought she said Mrs. somebody.
Well, I'm sure there is one.
I'm having trouble. I have a
Just not up here.
Senior monks, I was psyched. I want to address a couple of those questions we just had very quickly, and to say to you, I don't support vouchers and tuition tax credits and that type of thing. That's a choice that people make. This district is about a lot of choices. There are a lot of good opportunities. Every choice is a good choice in School District Five, but I don't support that. The teacher salary piece, Ms. Hutchinson did a great job answering that. I will support our teachers in any way that I can, but we have to be realistic. It may not be, didn't say that you always support that. I would certainly support that with tax credits. I have done that in the past. I will do it in the future, and I certainly would, but we have to look at the whole global picture on that. One of the things I left out a little while ago when I was telling you a little bit about myself is I left out that I have two grandchildren. And I see some other folks in this room having grandchildren. And quite frankly, I live in this area. I'm going to live in this area a long time, and one of my grandchildren lives here, goes to school here. And that's what our legacy is all about, continuing the great things in School District Five. So I think that's what we have to think, not just where we are personally, but the future coming along, not just because we have grandchildren, but it's a benefit for this whole community. I will tell you from my perspective, it's been a great honor for me to serve the last sixteen years on this board. And we've had plenty of times when we didn't all a hundred percent agree, but we have a great board. We've agreed on most of the issues, and you can watch us debate on a recording message. You can come see us in person, and we do a great job there. We have a respect for each other, and I think that's a great quality. Ms. Hutchinson and I have served on this board for at least fourteen years together, and she's done a great job all those fourteen years. And I'm proud to be on the stage with every candidate tonight. I think I'm going to be one of those positive campaigns that's gone in a long time. I will tell you, I'm going to differentiate a little bit. I am the only candidate for the Richmond County seat in School District Five. You need to know that. You're going to see some other things, but I'm quite honored with it, and my time is up. But thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for your support.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gans. Ms. Hutchinson, you are second up for closing remarks.
Thank you. And I have to echo what Mr. Gans just said about it being such a positive campaign. I really do appreciate that. And certainly, I have enough battle scars from previous campaigns, and so it is nice to go at this in a positive way with people who are really supporting public education. And that's why I got into the whole business of being on the school board. I was passionate about public education. I was very involved in my children's schools. I was a volunteer, served on PTO, SIC. And in 1996, or '95, when the school or the community did not support a bond referendum, it shocked me. I guess I was a bit naive. I didn't, couldn't imagine people not supporting public schools. So I started attending school board meetings back, I remember January 1996, to find out what in the world is going on. And there, I unfortunately learned that there were people who do not support public schools. There were people that served on the school board who had different ways of moving, seeing how our district should move forward. So from that point on, I really have been very committed to making sure that our school district moves forward. I want the future of our students to be an excellent future. I want to make sure that all of our students are achieved at their best. I want to make sure that our families are very happy with the school, our businesses. I want to make sure that they are getting the business they need and that we are attracting new businesses. And for the community, I think it's, they play a very vital role in our schools. They're volunteers. They support our initiatives. They come to events. And so I will continue to support public schools. I continue to support teachers, students, and my record will certainly prove that out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kates, the floor is now yours.
Thank you. Again, thank you for being here. I look around, I know some of you as administrators and educators and other professionals here at the school have probably been here a little while today. So thank you for sticking with us and supporting this forum. For me to be a part of the school board is a natural extension of my involvement in District Five. Having worked with SIC, PTO, behemoth boosters, athletic boosters, working with the district and various committees, working with two state-level committees, with the Education Oversight Committee, it was just a natural extension for me to become more involved with the board. I also wanted to model what I try to teach my children, and that is, if you want to be a part of a healthy community, get involved, be engaged. I wanted to model for them what we expect is to be partners in education. I've never seen one of my boys, teachers or administrators as an adversary, and I want to continue that partnership as a member of the board. A couple of things that were asked tonight, one about technology. I'm a technology person. I'm writing on my iPad, and you know, I appreciate that. Two parts of our technology plan, though, that I think we have to go back and revisit, one is we want to be device adaptable. That was one of the technology goals for Dr. Heffler, be device adaptable. So are we moving towards that direction? Will we provide devices for those that need them, but also have a bring-your-own-device model that can be supported with the infrastructure that we currently have? So, and the other one is, we want to make good digital citizens. I'm a little bit concerned at the way we've restricted access. That's kind of an easy thing to do, is to make it hard to, you don't mind, but as a person who's in and out of the school all the time, sometimes I can't use my own devices to work with the committees I'm on because I can't access some of the resources.
Thank you very much. Dr. Walden, you get to close the remarks portion.
Again, I would like to thank everyone for coming out to this forum tonight. I wanted to touch on a couple of things that I hadn't brought up previously, and one is that the greatest unique strength of District Five is the involvement of all its diverse stakeholders. We have parents, community members, teachers, staff, and administrator, group administrators who are willing to give their time and support for a variety of different activities throughout the district, all for the benefit of our students. One of the most important issues the district faces and the board will face is funding, because the board has very limited ways that they can control the funding due to Act 388. I just wanted to let you know that as a faculty member of the University of South Carolina, I oversee many grants, hundreds of thousands of dollars, so I'm very in tune to how you really need to of dollars, so I'm very in tune to how you really need to manage your dollars and budget wisely. Again, as I've said before, I've been involved as a volunteer in District Five for many, many years, and I attend school board meetings regularly, so I will be ready to hit the ground running should you decide to elect me to a school board position. My undergraduate alma mater has a motto that is earth prosum, that I may serve, and I hope that I may serve you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes a portion from our candidates, and I appreciate you allowing me to be a part of this tonight. You've all been a very attentive audience, and I just want to let you know, it's not easy for them to sit up here under the lights and answer questions. So, it takes a different kind of person to serve the public. It can very often be a thankless job, but it is a very important one, and I appreciate what all of you are doing, that are sitting up here, and I hope folks got an opportunity to learn a little bit more about you tonight. I want to welcome Ms. Bunny Ward, don't?
Actually, we're amazing.
Oh, okay. Answer, come on up.
Again, I'd like to echo the sentiments, just like how hard I know it is for you to sit up here. But I do want to say on behalf of the SICs and the District Five Teacher Forum, thank you guys for coming up here, sharing your insight, your vision, and your expertise as to how we can continue to build and grow our extraordinary district. I'd also like to thank Brian McConkey for his time, and thank each and every one of you guys for coming out and spending time and hearing this very important information.
I'm very sorry.
I'm very sorry, yes, ma'am. My name is Mr. Manson Joseph. I am the current District Five Teacher of the Year. Okay. Again, let's thank them as they go ahead and head off the stage. Thank you guys.